Good evening. Today is Monday, December 2nd, 2024. At this time, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Garcia, can we have a roll call?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
She is on her way.
Councilmember Neal called in this evening. Councilmember Buchalato.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you so much. Before we rise for a moment of silence and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance as we're entering into the holiday season, I just want everybody to also take a moment to remember everybody that's near and dear to them. I also do want to recognize we had two mayors. One was a former mayor of Florence, Arizona, Mrs. Patsy Padilla Williams, as well as the mayor of Marana, who recently passed away, so we want to recognize them as well. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unindistinct, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We'll go ahead and open up the first call to the public. Is there anybody in the public, online or in person, that would like to speak at this Seeing none, we'll close the first call to the public. Item six is Public Hearing and Presentations. This is a public hearing to receive comment on the conditional use permit to install an RV boat storage facility at 917 South Penale Parkway. APNs 20202001D, 20202001B, and 20202001C, PG 24-30, and this is for possible discussion approval and disapproval to adopt a resolution number 1920-24, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, approving the conditional use permit for an RV boat storage facility at 917 South Penale Parkway, Arizona. Assessor parcel numbers 202-02-001B, 202-02-001C, 202-02-001D, with recommended conditions.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, tonight we have a conditional use permit, or a CUP, coming before you for action in a public hearing. The applicant is Adam Baugh, who is here with his group today. They will also give just a brief presentation after mine. The request is for an RV boat storage facility at the sites that you had named in the agenda item. The site will be planned for a total of 452 RV spaces with 20 garages and a future office. The land is currently zoned as highway business commercial, or B2, which is our highest commercial zoning within the town of Florence code. It is just south of the state prison, and it is to the east of Highway 79 or Penale Now, we are looking at a conditional use permit because the code has a conditional use permit for storage of automobiles, recreational vehicles, boats, and trailers. This came with the recent code amendments that were passed this year. The site of the proposed use and the surrounding land uses, access to the site, and the impact on the surrounding properties are the things that you should all be considering when looking at a conditional use permit, and these are the same things that the Planning and Zoning Commission also considered when looking through this CUP. These are the surrounding land uses, all within similar and/or just similar or not low-impacting uses that are around this piece of land. So this site will be served by a full ingress and egress, and then it'll have an additional second exit, or egress, from the southwest corner of the site. A traffic impact statement was provided with this submittal, and the Arizona Department of Transportation signed off and reviewed this TIS. A six-foot wall is proposed to be built around the site per code, and rules and regulations will be established with this business in order to prohibit certain nuisances, as well as there will be the prohibition of storage of hazardous materials, there will be no overnight stays allowed, and security cameras will be on-site to monitor activity. Public participation was pretty extensive in this. There was public hearings for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Advertisements and notices were sent out to neighbors 300 feet of the site. A neighborhood meeting was held on September 12th at the community center at 6:00 PM, and letters of notices also went out ahead of the meetings for public hearings, as well as the second round, since two public hearings had to take place at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting due to a violation of public notice law. The first time this CUP went to Planning and Zoning Commission on October 3rd, no members of the public spoke at that, as well as the Planning and Zoning had a February recommendation, when it went again on November 21st. No one spoke at the public hearing, and again, the Planning and Zoning forward a recommendation of approval. With that, the proposed use does not appear to have a negative impact, based on the site being already commercial zoned. It's not within the immediate adjacent of a residential area. There's good access to the site via 79, and per this traffic impact statement, there will be minimal impact on the traffic itself. Planning and Zoning has forward a recommendation of approval, so staff recommends approval of this CUP. I'll now let the applicant come in, just give a brief, more in detail of what's going
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Adam Baugh, on behalf of the applicant. For the record, my address is 4062 East Washington Avenue in Gilbert. When my client came to me and he said, hey, I own this property, I want to develop it, I said, with what? You're next to a prison? You have an odd-shaped parcel, and there's a canal next to you. You only have, you have a very narrow front edge, so how do you do this? And he said, I got a plan. I said, okay. So we started to look at the zoning, to underlie it, and realized that a secure and state-of-the-art outdoor storage facility actually isn't allowed use, subject to the use permit, but with the recreational building that's in the surrounding area, a lot of times, folks in these new home subdivision, the CCNRs prohibit them from storing these on the side of their yards or in their garages or on their driveway. So having a place where you can actually have them in town fulfills an amenity need for a lot of these new home subdivision that you have coming in. And so as we started to look at the site, realized, at the end of the day, even though it's a use allowed in the district, it's subject to a condition use permit, which is really a question of compatibility. And when you think what you have next to you, a prison on one side, it's probably one of the few uses that are most optimally compatible next to there because it has very little trips and not a lot of activity there. But here's the presence of what's around us today. It's almost ironic that across the street from us is a fleet of government vehicles, and then RV storage, and then the prison to the north. And so when you think through what's around us, it really is the right use, given what's happening around us. The general plan already allows the use, and the zoning does subject to the use permit. So I'll click ahead to just a couple of last slides here. The important thing is, our job is to improve the aesthetic along the street without any of the impacts that may otherwise come with commercial. I think Penale Parkway is one of your significant thoroughfares to the street, tends to take a lot of traffic volume, so I'm sort of proud that our project creates only 85 daily trips. So if you have, if you were to have any other commercial use on this property, it would probably generate significantly more. Now, I went too fast. Is there a way to go back on the slide? Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it. So at the end of the day, it's really simple. There's a compatibility use permit test, and the first question is, is this use appropriate for its site and the uses that surround it? And I think it is. There's no adjacent neighbors or other businesses necessarily nearby. Is the site easily accessible? Certainly it is, given it's on Penale Parkway. And ADOT has approved the traffic statement, and in the 18 years I've been doing this, I've never had a traffic study approved in a single review with ADOT, except for this one. But I think Sarah, our traffic engineer, is probably the one who should take that credit. Is there any impact on the adjoining land around you? The answer is no. It's already in a larger commercial area. It's zoned for commercial. There's no odor, dust, glare, noise that would otherwise come with a use like this. So at the end of the day, I appreciate staff's analysis. They've been a good coach for us as we've gone through this process, and we've had no opposition from the community. We've had two Planning Commission hearings, both times with unanimous support without any opposition. And so we come to today, which with what I think might be the most optimal use for this land, given the uses that are around it. I think it creates meaningful use of what is kind of a weird parcel, weird shape, weird length, and weird conditions around it, and they somehow found a way to make something really good out of something kind of weird. It's consistent with the general plan, it's consistent with the underlying zoning, and I think it meets all the criteria of your use permit. So with that, I'll end my presentation, but happy to answer any questions that you may
Councilmember Larson, and then Adams, and then Buchalato. And then Vice Mayor.
I just had a quick question. I love everything about this personally. The only concern I have was with it being so close to the prisons. I know you said there's going to be cameras that are located there. My only concern is if there was ever an event of an escape, that there would be some type of issue with that. Surveillance-wise, there should be like no area that's not covered by surveillance crews.
Yeah, correct. I mean, we have a six-foot fence around our perimeter, and perhaps along our prison edge, we can look at making it taller, but I suspect the prison fence is probably going to be taller than our adjacent fence, but I think the key point is monitoring. People will do all kinds of random things if they have a really intense goal, but the ability to have the camera that aids the police or the pursuit of an individual like that is how we do it. And all our systems and our gates are also fully monitored as well, so when people come in, I'm a tenant, my phone accesses my device to get in, so it's not like a punch in a key code or a lock that just you can open up and get in. It's very intensive, the security protocol.
Yeah, I just wanted on record that I have the security concerns that I had there, but otherwise, everything else looked great to me, so thank you.
I'd just like to follow up on what you just said, because it just occurred to me. Do the police and fire have the equivalent of a Knox Box lock to get into that facility after hours?
Because it's a gated facility, yes, they'll have to provide that ability for them.
Great, 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 great. I think it's terrific. I think you did find a great solution for an odd piece of property. I would caution about saying, well, it's next to the prison. That won't always be a prison. They have basically shut it down, except for the death penalty, so I don't want to clutter up that area with unsightly activities, but the surrounding area is already, a parking lot is already an RV storage, so your site is beautiful. That's the first time since I've been on P&amp;Z or council that I actually saw a traffic impact study, and I really appreciate that. It really went a long ways to reassuring that we're not going to have issues up there. Thank you.
So I just wanted to say, people have come before us with an RV storage facility, and it was attacked at a lot of angles because it did not fit the area that it was being proposed in, and I just wanted to say that I believe that this absolutely fits the area that it's being proposed for, and I am excited to see that area built up, if it's approved, because that place has been vacant for a while, and actually, that lot was named after, the people that lived there were actually the Meadows family, and one of the prison units is named after them. Sad story, but they perished there in a house fire. But I'm glad to see it being built up to something. South unit is still live and active and just had an escape a couple years ago, so I just want to say that it did happen. It happened right next to where you're going, so my only thing for that is, I would say, build up that wall a little bit more, maybe eight feet. Don't make it so easy that they jump in and hotwire a vehicle and drive out, ruining your thing, but it does happen. It's rare, but it does happen here. Other than that, I thought your guys' plans were beautiful and well-done, and I haven't seen ADOT do that either, so, I mean, I don't think, I think the public has spoken by not speaking, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Listening.
Good afternoon. My concern is that I'm liaison to Planning and Zoning, and one of the things that was brought up is that had you guys talked to the Arizona Department of, well, not the, the Department of Corrections about the closeness to their fence, have you guys had that conversation?
We haven't. They've certainly received our notice letter as part of our mailing list. We have not had any chance to engage with them. We do know that post-zoning, we'll have to coordinate our design review efforts with our fence, particularly how we make our fence work with them, so if there's a particular point of contact that staff has, or I can Google it, but I don't know where to start, but I can certainly make that commitment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience or online in the audience that would like to speak? Closing the public hearing. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1920-24, PG-24-30.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One clarifying comment. Are we adding with recommendations?
Yes. To approve the resolution and PG 24-30 with the recommended conditions. Thank you.
Motion and a new second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item seven is our consent agenda, and all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless A, council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is removal of Tracy Florrie from the Historic District Advisory Committee effective immediately, and authorization of staff to seek applicants for the vacant position. Item B is to authorize staff to post a notice of intention to increase utility rates on the town's website. Item C is adoption of Resolution Number 1921-24. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, approving the acquisition of a portion of parcel number 202-05-005B by purchase as fee title property. Item D is approval of Resolution Number 1922-24, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, approving the acquisition of a portion of parcel number 202-05-004G by purchase as fee title property. And item E is approval to enter into a cooperative use contract 25-022 with DBA Construction Inc. for Heritage Park and Senior Center Americans with Disabilities Act improvements in an amount not to exceed $69,978.65. And item F, adoption of Resolution Number 1923-24, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, approving and authorizing Mayor Keith Eaton, Town Manager Bruce Walls, Deputy Town Manager Lisa Garcia, Finance Director Carl Dudding, and Deputy Finance Director Rebecca Jimenez to act as signatories for the transaction of business on the town of Florence banking accounts and declaring an emergency. Item G is approval of November 4th and November 18th, 2024, Town Council minutes. And item H is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. Community Services Advisory Committee minutes of September 12th, 2024. Florence Memorial Park Advisory Committee minutes of May 29th, 2024. Historic District Advisory Commission minutes of September 25th, 2024. And Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of October 3rd and 17th, 2024. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the agenda. I see no recommendations of removal, so at this time, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is our unfinished business, ordinance number 744-24. This is discussion approval, disapproval of, and second reading of an ordinance of the council of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, amending the town of Florence Code of Ordinances, Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 97, Municipal Cemetery, as outlined in the attached Exhibit A. Mr. Paul King.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're bringing to you the second reading of this ordinance, and just as clarification, we wanted to just make sure you're aware that this decision tonight is solely for the ordinance recommendation to approve as written with any corrections that you may ask and vote on. The eight recommendations by the committee, we wanted to make sure that all the work that the committee put in was acknowledged and addressed and publicly in a public forum, so we wanted to make sure that whether they're staff decisions by management or they're council decisions by policy, you were able to see all of those. So that's the purpose of including those. And then last meeting on November 18th, we were asked to include the recommendations by Joe Ruiz, who was on the committee, and so those are included in the document in the beginning, but the voting item is for Exhibit A. With that, love to answer any questions or listen to any comments.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Adam.
Yes, I had sent earlier a list, and now this was specific to the ordinance, right?
Correct.
So 97-01 on the monument, you've stricken the word cement from allowable types, yet 97.60 allows cement borders, so what is the problem with having a cement monument?
So the definition of monument is what you're talking about, where we struck cement. The later in the ordinance, in 97.60, it mentions cement in the monument section in fences and borders.
For borders, right.
So it is addressed in the ordinance, just not in the definition of monument in the ordinance. The language for cement is included in, it's defined as artificial stone by definition, concrete is, so it's included in the stone reference in the definition.
I'm not sure I'm understanding why it can't be. In the monument, it says memorial of a concrete is stricken, granite or other approved stone. So are you saying it can only be granite or approved stone? It cannot be cement?
So what I'm saying is, for the purpose of the definition itself, we removed, we tried to make it as succinct as possible, so we removed cement because it is considered artificial stone, which is captured in the word stone in the definition. So that's how staff addressed that item.
Okay. 97.07 talks about repairs to the grave sites if the owner contact is non-responsive. It says that the repairs shall be made by the town, and I'm asking, should we leave it as a blanket statement because quite a few of those graves are 50, 100 years old, and you're not going to get a response? And I'm asking if you want to clarify by saying, only if it's hazardous and there's a safety issue, because I don't know that we want to commit to repairing every degraded grave site.
I believe, so when the conversation was happening on this part right here, it would be up to the town to find somebody to repair, that they wouldn't go in there and just patch it with, you know, regular cement or anything like that. They would, they would have to find somebody to repair it.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, are we committing to repairing every degraded grave site, no matter?
Just the ones that become hazardous.
It doesn't say that in here.
So the discretion of that item would fall under the town manager and department director as far as the need. The statement starts out, if it becomes necessary, and that would be determined by the town manager and department director, and potentially, if it was a hazard, we'd involve the city attorney.
Obviously, right? That's what, absolutely, it's a safety hazard. 97.11, consent for opening caskets. Do we have a position on court-ordered openings, and if we do, do we want to put it in the ordinance?
So spoke to the town attorney on this one specifically, and any court order, state, local, or federal, would supersede this ordinance, so we would follow that court order.
Makes sense. On 97.34, it's just a typo. It says, opening a plot shall be duly, and it should be D-U-L-Y, not D-U-L-L-Y, as in dull.
So we have the ability to amend that as well.
Good deal. 97.39B, consent for non-residents. I think we had raised this, councilmembers, Neal had raised it before. I like this item in the ordinance, that residents are given right of first refusal, but it talks to the town making a decision to allow a non-resident and have some special dispensation. Do we have those rules written down somewhere? What special, under what conditions are you considered special?
So the way that staff will address this is, we'll use the ordinance language first, then we can't, we can't potentially, there's several scenarios that we could possibly come up with to address this, but we don't want to leave any scenarios out, so we would, it would be up to the discretion of the town manager and department director.
I understand that. It's up to your discretion, and that's all that should go in the ordinance, but I'm saying that along with passing this ordinance, I think it would be incumbent upon the town to start writing something down as to what those situations are. I don't think it's a good thing to wait until this comes up, because the minute you pass this, you're going to get somebody coming in and wanting to buy a plot next to a larger family, and so I think there ought to be some guidelines written internally to define this process.
So we will put in that, and we'll be developing our SOPs for the cemetery and updating those as well from an internal staffing process, and so that's a great comment, appreciate that, we'll put that in.
Thank you. I have nothing else.
I agree as well. Councilmember Maldonado.
I just know I wasn't here last time when this was discussed the first time, but I just wanted to thank all those members that served on the committee and all those folks that made this ad hoc committee possible, so thank you for everybody that took time
All right, we have had the discussion, and at this time, we need a motion.
Motion in progress.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 744-24.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, new business. Item A is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a contract with Ellison Mills Construction LLC, utilizing the Pima County Job Order Contract twenty-two zero three five for wastewater conveyance system and related facilities repair, rehabilitation and construction services in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Before we speak directly of the item, I would like to give just a brief overview on what job order contracting is and the benefits in this specific industry. So oftentimes, we design on a new build project, a set of engineer plans, which we will then go out and bids for, competitive bids for the construction. A job order contract is specifically, it could be for new construction and is used for new construction, but it's specifically often used at a water treatment plant or a water campus or a wastewater treatment plant for rehabilitation. So it is things where an engineer is not necessarily needed and is cumbersome, adds additional time, and adds a bunch of cost to the project that is not necessary, especially when something is needing to be repaired quickly because it has failed either due to erosion, a structural failure, internal, something that we couldn't even see, it erodes from the inside to the outside. They're just small maintenance projects that are not easily able to be, plans to be developed for those types of projects. So with that being said, tonight, we have two job order contracts. The first one, and this item specifically, is for Ellison Mills, which I believe the town has been using probably for at least the last five to six years with good success, whether it be in the right of way with manhole rehabilitation in the past, small things at the treatment plant, installation of water line. And so we are requesting a job order master service agreement, if you will, a master contract for two hundred thousand, where we might do a twenty thousand dollar project, a fifty thousand dollar project, but these are smaller projects generally in nature. With that, are there any questions as it relates to item nine A?
I do not see any. Councilmember Maldonado.
I just had a question. So once this stuff is put in, if approved, are these things going to be on a preventative maintenance, so where we can basically monitor these things and have indications that, hey, you know, this part might fail after so many hours? So that way, there's not catastrophic failure in the future, or at least try to predict it down the line?
Yes, sir. Several council meetings ago, there was an approval for a software package called City Works, where that is going hand in hand with the development of a more extensive preventive maintenance schedule, where we'll be able to track, like you said, the hours of use of something and not necessarily running something to failure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bushalata.
Just a quick question. As those repairs need to happen, who also approves this? Is this the town manager along with you? Like, who's overlooking the repairs and like the costs to make sure that it falls in line? Or are we just trying to just stay under two hundred thousand? Do you do like any bidding in between, is what I'm saying, for like the?
No, the purpose of this is
To utilize them?
Is to move quickly, and again, we can't bid without the plans. So then we would be going back to an engineer to maybe, let's just say, spend sixty thousand dollars on plans for a thirty thousand dollar project, when we could just pay thirty thousand dollars to do the project with workforce that is larger and more diverse than what we have within our current staffing levels.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, no further questions or comments. With that, we need a motion. Proceed.
I can't find it. I'm sorry. My computer just decided to work right now. It's faster just to ask you, what funds are we using to pay for this?
So this would be exclusively wastewater funds?
Perfect. Enterprise funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item nine A.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a contract with MGC contractors, utilizing the City of Scottsdale Job Contract two zero two zero zero five seven COS for Water Resources Treatment Services in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, Mr. Chris Salas.
This item has certain scopes of work already contemplated as part of it. One of the specific scopes of work was to add Y strainers. Let's think of it as a filter, a filter in front of the disc filter. The disc filters were previously approved at a previous council meeting. This item is needed, that kind of prescreens. The original scope of work was sub fifty thousand dollars, and it was simply to remove a spooled piece of pipe, put it in a strainer, and essentially bolt it back together. And it was, again, thought to be sub fifty thousand dollars. Upon further examination and looking at this project with the JOC contractor, which is one of the benefits of the JOC contractor, we have noticed a structural failure in not just the concrete, but the piping network that we cannot see has settled anywhere from approximately two and a half inches to four inches along this manifold. We do not have a fully developed scope of work for this project. We would like to start this project, come back to council to amend this. This item is needed as part of our permit. Our permit does require the UV system to operate. In a very recent inspection by ADQ, they noted that the UV system was not, I'm sorry, the disc filters were not operational. And the UV system was not operational. This was discussed previously, and they need to become operational. So we have to get these two items done before we can bring the UV system back on, which is item nine D, not coincidentally. So we would like to start with scoping this project and beginning some of the work, some of the excavation to further develop that work and then amend that contract, hopefully, early on in January, to get this much-needed item done to continue to be compliant with our ADQ regulatory requirements.
Counsel, are there any questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I was going to just clarify the same thing. Because you're putting in here wastewater capital improvement accounts. And the reason that I'm concerned about this is because I don't want this to be paid for. I understand the urgency, I understand the need, and all of that is fantastic. It needs to be completed, not doubting it. But I want to make sure that this is only being paid for by enterprise funds, that this is not going to be transferred from general funds to the enterprise fund, that this is self-fulfilling in the ratepayers' rates, as this is something that only is benefited by the people that are being serviced by the unit. So that's where I wanted to make sure that this is, again, not going to be transferred over from the general fund where the general taxpayers' money is going to be going to this.
There is no intent for this to be paid for anything but the actual ratepayers of the Florence Utility System. And I believe in the actual agenda item, we described that number oh five two five seventy-five two twenty-six. So yes, that is
I'm just afraid that I'm going to see later or at a different time or down the road, a general fund transfer to this fund to fund these projects that are coming out of there. That's where I'm concerned. And this is why I'm addressing it and vocalizing right now, that I do not want this paid for by the general fund. So I'm just being very articulate about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I? What is the concern if something happens and that needs to happen?
Well, there is funding mechanisms to make sure that projects like this can be completed.
Yeah.
And I understand the sense of urgency that needs for these projects to be completed now, which is why a lot of them aren't being executed. Instead, they're just paying for it, and they're already doing a rate analysis on the ratepayers. And that's, some of these projects should have been already completed or been already in the previous analysis. So my concern is that you have anyone north of the Gila, whether it's over in the Five Parks area or whether it's up in Anthem, are not benefiting from the system that's down here. They pay their own rates, which are as they are from Johnson Utilities or from the, what's the other one? San Carlo? Is it San Carlos? San Carlos is over here. And then, so I don't like the idea that these ratepayers, anyone north of the Gila, is paying for a system down here that's not, they're not receiving the benefit. They're already paying their higher rate for their water. So I want to make sure that it's staying encapsulated with the people who are utilizing the system, which is the same way they operate with their water systems as well. So I'm just trying to make sure that everyone is fairly being taxed and being paying for a service that they are utilizing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, with no further questions or comments, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve new business item nine B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries. Item C is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into an agreement with the Arcadis to promote environmental consulting to support services for the South Wastewater Treatment Plant for a cost not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, Mr. Bruce Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. As you are aware, we are under an ADEQ consent agreement for our Southwest wastewater plant. With that consent order, there are several dates that we have to go and meet for compliance. Arcadis would be a group, hopefully, that we can go and contract, that can go and manage that consent decree. In other words, make sure that we meet those dates of compliance. If we don't meet those dates of compliance, they would give us enough timeline to make sure that we contact ADEQ with advanced dates or other dates that we need to go and secure. This would ensure that we don't expose ourselves to further notices of violation and potential penalties. So my ask is that council approve this so that we can manage that consent decree and make sure that we don't expose ourselves to further violations or cost. Questions?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Town Manager. I know this is a very serious issue. How far are we along, would you say, in the process of meeting the consent agreement requirements? Are we fifty percent there, seventy-five, twenty-five?
I'd say right now, we are probably about ten percent being able to go and meet some of those. And we just recently asked for a couple of extensions because we're waiting on supplies to go and come in, some of which you all are voting on tonight.
And so do we anticipate that this Arcadis would be needed beyond this contract to manage this process?
Yes. So I would like an independent body to go and manage the dates that we are obliged to commit through ADEQ.
I think it makes sense.
All right, seeing no further questions, go ahead, and we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the town to enter into the agreement with Arcadis for a contract not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion approval, disapproval of entering into a cooperative use contract with KENG Construction via the Town of Marana Job Order Contract twenty-two zero one four for water and sewer repair, replacement, and installation services for CIP SU eighty-four for the construction of the ultraviolet disinfection and aqua system at the Southwest Wastewater Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed two million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, Mr. Chris Salas.
As discussed earlier this evening, the ultraviolet disinfection system is a requirement of our current ADEQ permit and is necessary to meet those requirements. The current UV disinfection system is inoperable. It is no longer supported, and you can no longer get replacement parts for it. There is no ability to rehabilitate that. It essentially needs to be demolished in place, a new concrete slab poured, and this modular unit put in place of the existing. This project does not necessarily need any engineering. It is a self-contained unit. The only thing that needs to be done as far as that is, if you will, unplug the pipe on one side. The other side, match them up to the new unit after it's in place on the concrete. Staff was successful in negotiating a reduced rate specifically for the large expenditure. So we are happy to report that the normal markup was reduced from approximately in the twenties to a seven percent markup specifically for the large expenditure, something that staff has done in the past a couple of times. But we did it in this particular one as well. So this is a state-of-the-art UV system and will be large enough for the plant to operate for, to the actual capacity of the plant in its existence. And as the plant grows, it will be expandable with a third manifold in place. With that, are there any questions about this particular item?
I don't see any questions about that particular item, but I do just want to take a moment just to acknowledge that throughout the previous items and this item that you have presented, you've also had a way of weaving in terminology, background. And I want to acknowledge that we have our newly elected in the audience and participating online. So as we're going through this very important aspect of upkeep regarding our water and wastewater treatment plant, it's important to know what the terms mean. I want to encourage you guys to always reach out and talk with Mr. Salas and our staff because as we've worked really diligently to upgrade the system, it's an old system. I can recall council meetings where we were talking about some of the pipes in the ground being wooden, carrying our water. So we have been improving drastically over the past decades, well beyond any of us even serving on council. And I also want to, you know, I do acknowledge you're bringing in different funding mechanisms, which is also a very important aspect, to know where different things are coming from. So I just wanted to take a moment just to share that. And thank you for the communications as we have been working on fixing our water system, water wastewater treatment plant systems. And I know that it is not an easy job, especially with the amount that we've had to do over time. Lastly, we did share in this meeting about the rates that will be coming before. And that's very important for our community to be aware of because a lot of times, we always hear, don't raise our rates, don't raise our rates. And the body that's here is different than the body that represents Epcor or San Carlos because we're a lot closer to the people, we're your local government. I just want to remind everybody that, you know, know that the improvements have to be made and plan, and we can make those improvements. With that, we do need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda item nine D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, motion carries. Next up, we have our Town Manager report this evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, there's a lot in the Town Manager's report. But what I'd like to go and highlight is most of my time last month was spent on contacting the businesses, and seeing how we can go and operate better together for the advancement of Florence. I'm happy to go and report that even the businesses outside of Main Street are happy about an upcoming meeting that we're going to have in January, where we all get together and discuss our concerns that they have, and how we can go ahead and move forward better as a group. So I'm excited about that. I think that's going to be a filled room when we make that happen. And I look forward to seeing how we can all operate better for the Town of Florence. And the rest is in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Department head reports. Is there any member of council that had a question for the department head reports? I did want to just share, very excited, under the Town Clerk's report, we have been working for a while, and coming in January will be the Leadership Academy, which will be focusing on leadership, communication, and civic engagement. So those of you that are interested in the community, this is an academy that was once active in the Town of Florence, and then over time, it took a little dip. And our Town Clerk has been actively working at reviving it, and it has been a goal to bring it back. And it will be here in the spring. So please be on the lookout in January if you are interested. And I also want to welcome her back. She has been representing the Town of Florence in the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I always want to make sure I get the acronym absolutely perfect. She's been learning and sharing, and we're so proud of you for representing our community and bringing back key things that you learned. Is there anything that you wanted to share in addition? I know you just came back from over the pond. You will have a report shortly. All right. And now, we will have our final call to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak at this time? Call to the public is open. Closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Adam?
I just have a couple of things. First, I want to lead off and thank the Town Manager for introducing me and letting me know about our hard-working folks in the Public Works Department. We had a waterline break at the Five Parks, and this happened to be Thanksgiving evening. And I know they work hard all year round, but to have that one night when you're spending with your family, and have the next day off to get dragged out of bed, and for a tough job, we really appreciate them. So please pass that along. Thank you very much. Happy news, we were at the Pennell Partnership Breakfast, and I know the mayor was there, and our incoming mayor, and our Town Manager did us proud. I will tell you that for his first panel, and these guys are very aggressive, right, Mayor? They're very boastful, right? He, he hung in there with a smile, and he got them, especially AJ. You did good. And that was a lead-in, because he was talking, AJ was bragging they're going to buy property and build a rodeo grounds. Well, we're kind of like way out in front of that, and so we got to brag a little about, about our Junior Parada, and thank you for the parade. I thought it was terrific. The turnout was really packed. And if you didn't get over to the rodeo, I've got to tell you, they had a trick rider, and after our rodeo royalty came in, she went out around the arena, full gallop, standing on the horse with the flag. It made everybody cry. It was the most amazing thing, it was really, really wonderful. So that's all I have, thank you.
I'm going to add that he also didn't have notes with him when he spoke. And you did a beautiful job. You were knowledgeable and spoke from the heart about our community. Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was my first parada parade, and I really enjoyed it. It was nice seeing all the kids out there, and handing them toys and stuff. They're very grateful. So, and I look forward to this Friday, to the Hometown Holiday Parade. So we'll be out there with the rest of the council members and the mayor, hopefully. We can see the season off with a bang. With the Town Manager, sorry I wasn't able to come to your, your thing, but I am going to look at it online. And I look forward to seeing you talk some more, because you did say you were a Toastmaster. So I remember. So that's, that's great to see him talk. So I, sorry I couldn't see that in person. And like I said, kudos again to, to the folks in the ad hoc committee for the cemetery. And, and for my fellow council member, Nicole Buchalato. Just thank you for, for allowing me and helping me work that together, because it was a big feat. And it was a lot, it was a lot to take in. Like I said, when you couldn't be there, I was there, and vice versa, so thank you. Just, I just want, hope everybody got back safe from the holidays, from Thanksgiving. And just please, everybody be safe with the next coming up holidays. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
I just want to say, it was a full circle moment for me, being in the Junior Parada Parade yet again, just because it was eight years ago, going for my first time, and having a little, like infant with me, and now being able to do it all again. And I have to say, after eight years, and seeing how much it's grown, and seeing all the people out there, it is one of my favorites. Not only is it a blast to hang out with these people, like they're the greatest people, they're so much fun, but to see the camaraderie of everybody on the street, and to see the way that everyone's interacting with each other, and everyone's smiling and waving, and the little kids come running up, and it is just a joy. So it is an honor to be able to be a part of that. And I'm so thankful to have this year the way that it happened, just the fun that we had, Nicole calling me and making fun of me throwing the candy. And just all of it, it was just perfect. Yeah, it's been an honor to be up here, and to be a part of this community, and to see how everybody has embraced each other, and been able to learn from each other, and have fun together. So I look forward to the hometown parade with the holiday parade, sorry. And just being able to hang out with everybody again, and have a great time. And hopefully, I get to see everyone out there with the same joyous smiles.
Councilmember Buchalato?
Okay, I have a full list, but I'm going to go fast, because my son's in a soccer game right now. And if I can make it, I'd like to. Okay, so I just wanted to say phenomenal job with Junior Parada. My only issue was the parade route. It took a lot longer than it needed to be. So I think keeping it on Main Street is, is a great thing. And I just wanted to say, though, that it was phenomenal. I was happy to see the amount of floats that were in it, all different styles. Some were decorated, some were just horses, and I just, I absolutely love it every year. Next thing I wanted to say is, I really appreciate the updates that we're getting from the clerk, from the Town Manager, from everybody. I mean, I really appreciate, it may be something little to somebody, but it may be something bigger to somebody else. And I wanted to tell Mr. Salas, you know, tell your staff thank you very much for, you know, being out there right after they did Thanksgiving, exhausted probably from the day, and working through the night to get that repaired for, for all those people out there. So it's, it's very appreciated. Other than that, I wanted to say, you know, this is a couple people's pretty much final, final hurrah over here. And I just wanted to say that, you know, thank you for everything. You know, we don't always agree, and we shouldn't. You know, we, we should be very different on a lot of things, and we are. But it's always been a respect, respectful discussion, and I've learned a lot in these two years from you guys. So, you know, good luck in all your future endeavors, and thank you for everything.
Vice Mayor?
It has been a very interesting and busy four years. I think this might be the last time we get to say something, so.
You'll have next Monday. You'll have next Monday. You'll have a call to the council.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that we have, moving forward, I want to make sure that we have, you know, I know I ran as a write-in candidate, and, you know, I feel that, you know, I, I hear that there's a possible interview coming up for council, and I'm like, that kind of doesn't validate the almost 750 voters that voted as a write-in. I believe that that position should go to the person that made the highest amount of votes on that. So I just hope that the council makes the right decision when they are seated.
You guys are like, wow, the mayor is a little quiet. I was just a little quiet because two things. A, I didn't know that, but B, I didn't know that. So for my closing comments this evening, it's not the last time that we'll have an opportunity for a call to the council, but next meeting will be our, some of our last meetings. And it has been amazing. We've made a lot of progress, and I'm going to share a lot more of that next week, when I have my few minutes to share with you. But for this meeting, again, Department Heads, fantastic job on the reports, very detailed. Catherine, you're doing an incredible job in regards to filling positions and showing us what is still open, as well as who has been put into those positions. Mr. King, fantastic job communicating all of the programs that we have in the Town of Florence, the amount of participation. It's been an absolute pleasure to see the growth, not only in the programs that are being offered in the Town of Florence, but the amount of citizens that are taking an opportunity to engage in them. Mr. Salas, with your department projects, I know that the water wastewater treatment plants have definitely taken up a huge portion of that, but we also know that there's the road infrastructure that your crews have been working diligently on. So you guys are doing a lot, and I know sometimes you're doing a lot with very little, but it's evident. So anytime somebody has a question of what is the town doing in regards to infrastructure projects, I will always direct them to your reports, to our website that details what is happening and when it's happening, as well as to Open Gov for those that are looking for, being able to put in for our positions. Chief Snyder, excellent job. I read the reports, and you guys are definitely making progress. Congratulations to those that have been promoted, so thank you very much. Ms. Garcia with the Towns Clerk's project, we are so proud of you. And it has been, again, such an amazing opportunity that you are representing the Town of Florence, and really doing the municipal clerks world just so good. You are writing the book, so thank you. And Town Manager Walls, I know that you're working hard to fill the position of the police chief, and your communication, the new council is going to be absolutely delighted. The communication and the follow-through has been much appreciated. No, in all seriousness, you always guide people with just such an ethical, legal, and moral compass. We couldn't ask for a better attorney, so thank you. And Mr. Dudding, again, it's been delightful to watch you come up and partner. Florence, I've noticed, and this may just be an observation that I've made, and I may be right, and I may be wrong, I don't know, but it's my opinion. We have an amazing set when it comes to like finance, and how we handle certain procedures. The way that you and Becky have been able to communicate to our councils, and really break down the different factors of what goes where and why and how, has really helped explain things over the year. So keep doing that. The budget process has been smooth the past few years, and hopefully it continues to do so. Again, hope to see everybody at the Hometown Holiday Parade. It will be this Friday. I believe the festivities are from 5 until 8 o'clock, and we're going to light up Main Street. So come watch us flip the switch. The parade should be at 6 PM, is that correct?
Oh, it's you. 6?
Just going off memory. I'm mixing up parades, but I believe 7:30 is the, is the start of the parade. But we'll have all kinds of activities starting at 5.
Okay, and the snow and everything off of the Silver King?
5:45. Is that the lighting? 5:45 is the lighting.
If we meet at Silver King at 5:30, and then we'll do the flipping of the switch at 5:45?
Mayor, if I may real quick, I just want to say the reason I laughed when Cliff's name was said is because of the way that he's always so serious. And when his name got called, he was like happy. And it just brought me joy, so it's no disrespect. I have so much respect for you, Cliff, and I just wanted to clarify. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that.
We recognize you. All right, with that, we do need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.